Prior to starting every commissioner meeting, we always ask for the help of local clergy. And this morning is is one of those mornings Doug Brown is here from Monterey Baptist Church, and we would ask you lead us in an opening prayer. Podium's yours.
Thank you. I invite all to pray with me. Father, we thank you for all the many blessings you give us. We thank you that we have the opportunity to meet and be a part of government and to have a hand in how the county that we live in is run. And we thank you for all of our leaders, those you have appointed into various positions to keep the peace and provide stability for us, uphold the good, punish evil. We thank you for those graces. And we ask that you bless everyone that serves in our government, including the Board of Commissioners here. Bless their families, bless their themselves with with health, with strength, and with wisdom, wisdom to uphold the oaths of their office and their responsibilities well, and to show care for their constituents and for the county that they live in. And we thank you for all that they have done and continue to do. We ask your blessing and your your favor over these meetings and over all that's done in our county. And we thank you ultimately for your son, Jesus Christ, that through him, we're credited perfection that we don't have for ourselves by simple faith in him, and are able to be reconciled back to you. And we thank you for all the graces that you provide in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And now to officially open our minute, Commissioner Bachelor, would you lead us in the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call this meeting to order. We will start with our regular agenda. Letter C, Approval Regular Session Minutes of August the 6th, 2025. Board, I know you've had these minutes, had the opportunity to review them. Are there any revisions or changes that are needed to the minutes?
None.
Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran, Commissioner Painter.
Yes, we are at letter C. Letter C is a presentation for a certificate of recognition for Betty Haynes, winner of the 2025 Claremont County Fair Coloring Contest. And that must be you, right? Well, I'll have the commissioners come up there with me because this might be something they want to, they might want to get close to you and and help you to the podium, especially when we're done with this presentation, you're probably going to want to give a big speech, right?
That goes, that goes.
You bet.
Yes.
You bet. And so one of the parts we wanted to showcase real quick here is that we have a couple people within our midst that made this particular contest doable. And that is Gretchen Willibrick-Hallig. She is here today, and so is Drew Demars. So Drew, if you two would come up also. I know Gretchen's wanting to give a little speech too when we're done.
And I entered the contest, but mine wasn't nearly as
So Gretchen chaired this particular contest, and Drew is actually who put this coloring guideline out that, you know, they were able to compete on. So he drew.
So this is the first of three presentations today. There's this one. There's one for Bill DeHaas, Claremont Senior Services. Oh, he's giving a presentation, not getting a certificate. Maybe they'll give him a certificate, then another presentation. I am generally, okay, I'm all for a cute kid, but they always do these like giving out certificates. At least this is to a non-government person. When you watch these a lot, most of the time they're giving certificates to themselves. Again, I'm not against this. I'm just like, is this the top per? By the way, this would be a better thing to do in evening session when people's families could attend or more people attend. But they love this stuff. And watch, they'll be taking the photo op up in front, all that kind of stuff, you know. They could also do this stuff before the meeting to get it out of the way.
Claire, Commissioner Claire Corcoran, who's right here with me. This certificate is presented to you by the three of us. And I will, here, step right out. Here, you shake my right, and I give you this and your left, and look right. Thank you.
Let's get a picture with Tom and Heather.
And this, this is what the winning picture look like. Here's the, here's the ribbon, okay? Here's the picture. Look right
Wait a minute, hang on, we're gonna stage this. Got her?
Okay. There you go. All of this is yours. And let me show them what you did. This is her picture.
It says
Talented?
This is to celebrate American 250 here in Claremont County. So you're seeing a lot of events and murals and things that are being erected all over, you know, Claremont County. So this is what
And I have to ask her, would you please give Drew some lessons on
We'll get some glasses. We'll get some coloring to Drew.
And so you might want to sit those things down, and you guys might want to come up here with us and take a picture. Put it right here in the middle. There you go.
So this is your normal picture time at the commissioners' meetings. At least this one is not giving an award to a government person like they normally do.
Letter, hold the picture. Hold on, stand right there. We want to make sure we get this right, because this is really cool.
What I'd like is to see the commissioners do coloring contests and see how they could do against the kid. It'd be interesting to see how Claire, Bonnie, and Diamond Dave could do against the kids in a coloring contest.
Go with this way, just a little bit.
Look right here. Everyone smile. We'll do like three, two, one, and one more. Three, two, one. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Billy, one more picture.
Hi Gretchen, you're the one that did all the work.
Gretchen.
Drew, you did in there too. These are the guys that did all the work. And actually Drew was the artist who designed this for us, but he could stay in line.
That's my weak point.
All right, everyone look here. We'll go in three, two, one, and one more. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Gretchen draw your heart.
Good job, Betty.
Thank you very much.
That was awesome.
And to add to that, we had a wonderful fair committee this year that Gretchen led the committee and got everyone involved and actually twisted Drew's arm to start drawing something that had to do with history, because this is the 50-year celebration of the birthday of America. And it all, the whole picture and everything is all around our history. Thank you, Betty.
You bet. And what a cool name.
I love your dress.
So with that, we could just take a recess for a couple hours. I mean, that was so much fun. Let's, you know, do something different. We will move on. The next presentation is Bill DeHaas, Director of Claremont County Senior Services for the 2024
Okay, so let's remember on the senior services that there was an embezzlement scheme at the senior services that was covered up by Prosecutor Mark Toccaulby. They found, I think, $30,000, $40,000 worth of embezzlement. And they said they stopped investigating because it would be cost too much money to, there was so much embezzlement. So this guy, Bill DeHaas, who was on the board, became the head of Claremont Senior Services, because God forbid you would ever clean house someplace when there's been an embezzlement scheme.
To share a little overview on our 2024 activities, I'll apologize in advance that we're already more than halfway through 2025 before getting up here to do this for you. But but I'm glad for the opportunity. So I did also bring with me our 2024 impact report. I wanted to share that with you too. So I'll get us started here. As you all very well know, Claremont Senior Services exists to provide a broad range of home and community-based services that enable older adults here in Claremont County to live independently in their homes for as long as possible. And in doing so, reducing the amount of nursing home placement needed. And just a fact here, you know, it's incredibly beneficial to the taxpayers, our services, and the senior services levy here in Claremont County, because essentially, we can keep an individual in their home for and continuous assessment of need. Heading on a couple of those things, and I think I'll hit on it here later in the presentation, too. Performance excellence, you know, we send out
So there was a, I don't think it came through when I said there was an embezzlement scheme at Claremont Senior Services involving Greg Carson. And it was largely covered up by Prosecutor Toccaulby's office. I broke it, basically. And then they did something, but it's still, I believe, a huge cover up. They investigated, found like 30, 40 grand, and then they stopped investigating, because I think largely because Greg Carson is a political insider. So they got to be protected. We have very unequal justice in Claremont County at the hands of Prosecutor Mark Toccaulby.
26 years, living on about $1,200 per month. So not a lot there. Obviously, our youngest client customer is 60 years old. That is our eligibility, the base of our eligibility, 60 and older. And our oldest is 102. And last I looked, I believe, we had five or six individuals that we were providing service to that were 100 years or better. So pretty impressive to be a part of their story and a part of their life and continuing to help them remain in the community. I did a little breakdown of what it looks like by age and gender. So you can see there that our largest group of older adults is those in the 70 age frame. Right behind that is is our 80s. I can't even see that far. And 60-year-olds are 25% of who we serve. Astoundingly, 67% are female. I think that goes to show that females live a smarter lives than us men. They last longer in the community. So bravo there. Play in the room a little bit.
This is just a joke, but maybe men die early because of females. Just a joke.
He partnered with Miami University's Scripps Gerontology Center to do a study of the older adult population here in Claremont County. I think we'll be receiving that final report here soon, but it piqued my interest to do a little bit of research myself. And 25% of Claremont County's overall population is older adults, 60 and older. The largest age group of that population is individuals 60 to 64. They make up just a little more than 7% of Claremont County's population. And the second largest age group of overall is 55 to 59, again, making up about 7%. So those are individuals that are going to becoming eligible for the services that we provide here very soon. Just some highlights of what we were able to accomplish last year. We saw overall an increase of about, I think, 12% over all of our services. Some larger increases amongst programming than others, but overall, I believe it was about a 12% increase from the prior year. Home care, we provided over 33,000 hours to 742 seniors here in Claremont County. We delivered an astounding 70,000 home-delivered meals to 500 individuals. And home-delivered meals is an important piece, obviously, for their nutritional needs, but it's also an extra set of eyes on that individual throughout the week, and another opportunity for them to socialize with our staff. They get checked on, make sure they're doing okay. Transportation, I love this one as well. We provided over 36,000 trips last year and covered well over 600,000 miles, getting over 1,000 seniors to various medical appointments, dialysis treatment, grocery store visits. That is probably, that is our most utilized service that we provide. And again, very key to keeping older adults in the community and active. Our Adult Day Program, located right here in Batavia, provided over 35,000 hours to a little over 100 individuals. And 100 individuals, but that also impacts their caregivers as well. Our Adult Day is a center for individuals dealing with some cognitive impairment, physical limitations that typically require 24-hour care from a caregiver. So they're benefiting from that service as well. Our Home Repair Program provided over 5,000 hours of service to almost 400 seniors. And that consists of building wheelchair ramps, installing handrails, grab bars. We do a little bit of minor plumbing and electrical work. And and we do that with the help of CDVG funds and housing assistance grant dollars. So we're grateful for those funding sources for that program, again, keeping older adults in their homes and safer environments. Our Case Management Program is essential to everything we do. They coordinated care for a little over 2,500, 2,500 older adults last year. And they are responsible for working with our customers. Every customer that receives our home care, home-delivered meals program, receives a case manager. And they're able to create a personalized care plan for that individual, help them with outside resources, help them apply for, whether it's the Home Energy Assistance Program, Medicaid benefits, things like that. But they are an integral part of what we do at Claremont Senior Services. Our Lifelong Learning Centers, which many kind of know as senior centers, we've got one in Union Township, one in Miami Township. They received 24,000 visits through those doors in 2024. And they come there, again, for for socialization, various forms of of programming kind of geared towards health and well-being, education, arts and crafts. But they have a great time. And like I said, visit those centers quite often. Our Volunteer Program, we provided over 14,000 hours of service. We've got a little over 100 volunteers right now. And and they are a critical part of what we do as well, because they help us leverage those senior service dollars to be able to do more for the community that we're providing services to. So again, we did quite a bit last year. One, one thing that's not up there, probably should have provided, but our Adult Protective Services Program also. Last year, it's one of the programs that I hate to see increase over the years. But last year, I believe we had 560 sent referrals regarding older adults and potential abuse, neglect, exploitation. But we have a wonderful Adult Protective Services Team. We contract with the Department of Job and Family Services to provide that assistance here in Claremont County. So glad we're here to do all of these things and continue to do them for the older adults and families here in Claremont County. Talking about our quarterly surveys, again, we put these out to our customers to get feedback on what we're doing good and what we need some some work on. But just gave you some figures there on the on the overall average of last year. As you can see, some pretty exceptional satisfaction from our customers in what we do. And I always enjoy reading these, for one, to see all the great work that our staff are doing and how great they're doing it. We love that feedback. And I also always get a chuckle reading the comments from our meals, our home-delivered meals program. As you might imagine, every pallet is quite different. So, you know, some people will say horrible things about the fish, and some will say they love it. But but anyway, overall, you know, all of our services undoubtedly are helping older adults remain in their homes and remain in the community. And and we share those those quarterly satisfaction surveys with county administrator, and I'm sure those are passed on to you commissioners as well. So moving on quickly, how are we funded? So local taxpayers fund about 72% of what we do. And again, that's through the Senior Services Levy. And we are so grateful for the support that we've received from Claremont County, from the commissioners, to be able to do what we do. And again, keep older adults in their homes and providing that support to families and caregivers. I got a breakdown of other funding sources as well. You know, we work, provide services through Title III, which is part of the Older Americans Act. We receive a little bit of funding from Passport and MyCareOhio. So and then we get a fair amount of customer donations, too. We ask for, all of our services are donation only. We don't require any any fee for service for what we do. Our customers and families and caregivers do donate back to us for the great things that we're doing for them. And I also provided a breakdown of the expense by program. So as you can see, transportation is the highest expense that we see. And again, you know, we're providing 30,000 rides, 60 or 600-plus thousand miles on the road every, every year. Home care comes in right behind. Home care, again, that consists of light housekeeping services, personal care, in-home respite services, followed by case management, home-delivered meal, home-delivered meals, Adult Day, and Adult Protective Services. So just wanted to give you a breakdown there of of what the expenses are by program. Looking ahead, you know, we're, we have a lot of things on the horizon to be looking at. You know, obviously, we'll be waiting to see what these community needs assessments come back and say. So that'll, you know, may shift our focus a little bit. But obviously, we're seeing increased utilization of all of our core programs. What does that mean, you know, for us going forward? I've looked at 2025's mid-year numbers, and and we're seeing some some increases again from last year. So focusing on that, how we're going to continue to provide sustainable and efficient services to older adults here in Claremont County, you know, based on those increased utilization numbers. As I mentioned, you know, primary source of our funding is the Claremont County Senior Services Levy. So that's our primary source. So we have to work, work within that at this moment. There are potential for waiting lists or caps in service. That's something that that we've not had to do often in Claremont Senior Services' history of over 50 years. But it may be something that we need to look at. We look at now what the, you know, what the possibilities are. And then the other one, which I know I've I've mentioned a handful of times when I've come up to this podium, and Commissioner Painter has offered conversations, our senior housing shortage, you know, we have, I think it's a little under 500 on our waiting list right now, but it's still a growing issue. And I'm, I'm in my, going on my third year in this role, and housing has been the one that's the biggest hurdle for me to jump into and educate myself on. But I'm getting closer on being ready to have those conversations to see what we can do to alleviate that issue that we're having for older adults. And then ongoing volunteer recruitment, that is an ongoing thing. Again, they help us leverage everything we do. So that's incredibly important to to many nonprofits, is their volunteers. Without them, we would be doing far less. And just in conclusion, you know, we are here to to deliver critical services to older adults, high-quality services that are going to keep them in their homes, keep them out of nursing home placements. And we are, we are committed to doing that efficiently and effectively. And of course, being responsible stewards of taxpayer and donor dollars, we want to, that is a high priority for us, and continuing to have the trust of the commissioners and the community. Quite frankly, we love having that responsibility. So I'm going to wrap it up there. I think I may have hit a record.
I think you did.
Presentation I've ever had. But I'm definitely willing to entertain any comments or questions that you all might have.
Bill, I just love your strategy going out there on Facebook now and calling out for people to help volunteer, and saying you can do the simple things like rake their front yard, or help pick up the garbage, you know, that people are throwing out in people's front yard, or doing anything to just help and check in on people. I think it's, it really, I saw that again yesterday. So I'm kind of tracking it. And I think it's a great call out to people that Claremont County needs volunteers and how much we do appreciate them.
It has been shared a lot on social media.
Oh, yeah.
Blessing and curse social media, but we're hoping to see that come, some volunteers come out in droves to help the older adults.
Thank you for all you do.
You know, in your presentation, you came to a couple of great mottos. You know, you should add to your presentation down at the bottom, if the fish was better, we could help more. You know, and with that, what I would say when we're talking about senior housing, my the critical part to that, she wanted to spend, you know, all of her hours after my father passed away, and some activity that that they were doing, whether it was taking a bus ride to see a Christian group, or, you know, whatever it was. And I could never get on her schedule. You know, she never had anything to do. My father died. She hooked up with senior services. And then I would have to call in, she'd say, well, let me check my schedule. You know, well, I can't do that for two months. I'd be like, two months, Mom? Come on, you know? I mean, it was crazy. But, you know, one of the things I tell you about about housing is that, I mean, we, I remember when Cindy stood up in front of this podium and said, we had 400 people on a waiting list. And now we're at 500 people. And and I know you're starting to embrace that thought. And I just wanted to let you know that you'll embrace it a lot more when you turn 65. You know, that's kind of how it works, because when you see what that does as far as an impact.
So I just want to comment that our commissioners are nothing more than glad-handers. So they are supposed to be basically business management professionals. So they should be working at, how do we reduce waiting lists by having more efficiency using technology? But instead, you get fucking glad-handing nonsense about somebody's mom. I'm not for somebody's mom doing senior services. But Diamond Dave Painter and the Painterettes, their job isn't the glad-hand. Their job is supposed to be like business managers. I worked in the actual business world. Painter says he does, but did, but I don't know what he did exactly. But they just basically do this glad-hand stuff versus talk about, nobody's going to ask a question about, what's the conversion rate of dollars to services getting to end people? How do we increase the amplitude of our dollars? How do we use outside funding? How do we do grants? How do we get companies in the community involved? They want to talk about these colloquial stories, because they don't really have any depth. These are not business people that are commissioners, that can understand that there's an aspect of what's happening here that is about running it like a business, so that you can get more stuff to the people at lower cost. You know, at the end of the day, I like going to Walmart, but I hope, I'm glad there's people somewhere that are worried about logistics and supply chain to get more shit to me at a low price.
Housing board for me to give back a little. So it's great work. And if anybody wants to really feel something in their heart, do something to help.
When I was in the business community, I never had a meeting where I didn't get critiqued for something I needed to do better. These guys, they're just, oh, everything's fantastic. Do a wonderful job, Bill. Thank you. I want to get on one of your panels.
Yes, we are going to be putting out some on our activity calendar. We're going to be doing some some recreational trips, kind of touring the murals and museums. Those will be coming out soon. So we're excited for that. And
I'm all for sending Bonnie on a recreational trip.
23rd, we're doing something, we've done something a little bit different the last two years. We're having it at Great American Ballpark for a Reds game. And the Reds are, yeah, you know, we'll see. Help us bring out a little bit of a crowd this year. But we'd love, we've got information on our website. We'd love to see anybody there.
And if someone wants to donate to senior services, how do they do that?
They can, they can go on our website. We've got, I think, on every page of our website, there's a little donate button right there. They can, they can reach out to us at that number listed. Ask for me or our development coordinator, and they can make that happen.
And if you're on your way out today and you want to leave bills at the table, you can do it right there.
Thank you all again.
We'll have a public participation portion later here. Just one more presentation, if you can hold off to that. Okay. Yep. So we have one more presentation today. Vanessa Hannah, Executive Director of Valley View Nature Preserve, Habitat Restoration Project for Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program Grant. Glad you guys are here today.
Good morning. Thank you.
Morning.
I'm not Vanessa.
I noticed. I noticed. I'm Chris Abel. I'm the board.
I don't know what this group is, but there's a lot of these nongovernmental organizations that do some good work. A lot of them are also insider deals like Cardinal Land Conservancy, where they basically get, it's kind of like the way the commissioners use the chamber as a way to do things without it being needed to comply with public transparency rules. A lot of these organizations are like this, and they, and people get them running. And I don't know about this one. I know I know Cardinal Land Conservancy, I think, is a swamp organization.
A number of years using Clean Ohio, private funds, other funds along the way. This grant application, what we are asking for you, from you, is a resolution of support that's required by the statute to apply for Clean Ohio funds for our organization, 501(c)(3).
So here it is. It's a nonprofit, they're trying to get government money, they need something passed by the commissioners to say, give them government taxpayer money. See, let's say if the commissioners ask any critical questions about whether that use of government taxpayer money will actually be very effective.
This property, so by way of history, this property was settled by three families that still have descendants there as pioneers in the late 17, early 1800s, farmed for 200 years. Then it got overgrown with a bunch of honeysuckle and stuff that isn't great on the farm fields, and we're looking to take that back. Our volunteer crew is mighty and massive, but we need a little financial help to get this restored back. So Vanessa's going to cover the details, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
And this is Vanessa?
This is, yes. Nice to see you. Thank you so much for the time, and to give you a little bit of information about this application, and where we are, and what we hope to achieve. For those in the audience, maybe who aren't as familiar, this is just a property map of Valley View. As Chris said, we have 190 acres. We have seven miles of mode trails that are free and open to the public every day, year round. We're proud of that, we think that's really important. We, our volunteer crew, we logged over 9,000 hours of effort last year. I am the employee, but everything that happens, happens through their passion and their hard work, and we wouldn't do it without them by any means. So we work each year, we're small shop, and we're proud of that. We're, you know, we, our focus is that 190 acres and making it the best it possibly can be for now and future generations. And so each year, we try to do a little bit more, add value not only to the Milford community, but also the greater community of Claremont County, and be a special outdoor place. Chris mentioned all the invasives. I enjoyed a couple of years ago, when we got to drive you around and do a little tour, I think we were talking East Fork, Lower East Fork Project, along with maybe some composting and food waste reduction when you visited. I don't know if you were paying, if we talked as much about the invasives, but this is a great aerial that we recently had. You know, again, as Chris said, we have imperated some abandoned agricultural fields that were taken over. You can see the density, this is a winter picture. And so we know the potential that's there to move forward, and we're really excited about the idea of the Clean Ohio grant dollars that opened up. They didn't used to exist, it used to just be acquisition, but now they offer, for land that was purchased through Clean Ohio, they then can support you in terms of restoration and management. We have, I did bring a picture of kind of a before and after, if you will, a lot of art, and that side might look familiar to you. Pretty dense fields, particularly in the middle section of our property. We've worked hard, and on the right there, you know, that's a field that we restored. And so to me, that's inspirational. I'm really excited about this project. I learn every day through it, but I think that Valley View can be really, really very special space for people to visit, as well as the natural environment. We work hard on partnerships, and, you know, these funds have been available for a little while, but we waited to make sure we had the capacity and that we were ready to manage the project, because when we do it, we want to do it for the long term, we want it to be lasting. So we've put together some zones. We have a great partnership with Claremont Soil and Water District, the Claremont Solid Waste District, the Park District has been a great partner. And of late, we've also really connected with the Civic Garden Center of Cincinnati, the Cincinnati Zoo in Bauer Farm, which is kind of similar property to ours out in Mason, and the Nature Conservancy have helped us inform a master plan, long-term, sustainable, and something that we can manage. That, and so Valley View's a big place, but we're kind of doing it in sections, and that purple zone is the kind of valley, the main fields, and that's where the worst of those invasives are. And so that is where we've focused our project. This overlaps, I think I shared with you when I sent the letter, I shared the original Clean Ohio application. So this project overlaps that very first grant award for purchase of those about 70, 69, whatever, point acres. And so we're asking for the funding to help us restore that particular area. That was in Round Three back in 2005. So the idea is that we will, you know, really kind of celebrate the flood plain, the floodway, the wetlands that we have, to make sure they're doing their job for the surrounding properties. The timing of it's really, really kind of exciting, too, because, you know, you're, I know you guys are fully aware of the Lower East Fork Project to restore that high bank erosion on the East Fork there that's indicated in yellow. And so what we'll be able to do in concert with that project is kind of connect our wetlands to that, into that river restoration, which this just then increases the impact of both projects. As a result, we look at these as, and I'm excited, we had our first bio blitz on Sunday. I learned through doing all of this. So we did a bio blitz with a bunch of people, and those are the types of community engagement opportunities that we're going to have. I had the entire Patterson Elementary School staff out yesterday, and the educational opportunities will be really terrific when we restore this property, and the accessibility to all the areas and all the ecosystems will be greatly improved. And so those are our goals with this. And, you know, we're excited about it. We're, I, you know, I just think it'll really open up a lot of doors for the community members and educators in Claremont County.
So this 190 acres is already under Conservancy, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there is the waste department, there's a composting area on that property, isn't there?
Correct, yes. And if you remember, Paul Brosh is here, we reeled him in after retirement. So we didn't want Paul to get bored, so.
I remember, I went out there, and they were like little fenced areas where people have different plots that they can plant vegetables on and all that. Yeah, that's true. That was true. And I said, whose are these tomatoes? And he said, those are yours now. That's not true. They all have names on them, by the way.
We're proud of that garden program, and that's become really robust, you know, the history of that agriculture on the property. We started the first community garden in Milford well over 10 years ago, gosh, almost 15 possibly at this point. So we have people doing that, but then we also have close to two acres that are volunteers. We affectionately call it our Grow to Give Garden, and we're donating about 15,000 pounds of fresh produce.
That's real close to what, Patterson?
Correct, we're right out the back door.
Right out the back door. And they, and the kids do some things.
They do. We serve as an outdoor classroom. We've worked, we've waited on this because we were also constructing a really beautiful shelter. It wasn't up when you were there, but it is now. We'll have to have you back out, we'll certainly have you out for that.
You had cool signage out there, you had cool signage out there, and, you know, kind of designating the different areas.
We're excited to, Chris is really basically, single-handedly well, with some help from his kiddo, who's equally talented, built that shelter. And part of that project also is an accessible trail. We feel very strongly that everybody, I was just talking to Bill about the seniors coming out, that's one of the key reasons we built the shelter, because it's been prohibitive for people to visit Value. So the shelter, the accessible trail, and some additional parking that didn't exist, if you remember, you just kind of stopped in a field. So we're about across the finish line on that project, so now this next step is to really make the property special.
Which was really cool, if you were driving a Jeep, you know?
Yeah, right? Yeah, the golf cart works well, but.
Yeah, it really was, it was. So, so this is for, and so how much money are you asking for, for this restoration, this 190 acres? What is that?
Our budget for this 70 acres is $325,000 to request. We also have match, which we are, through private funds, have had committed, as well as our volunteer. It's really exciting to build that monitoring program and the volunteer engagement, community engagement, which also helps serve to take care of that project.
Are your master gardeners helping you at all? Any of the master gardeners?
From OSU extension?
Yes.
Yes, a couple of them actually have garden plots at Valley View, so I love that.
I love that, too.
Yes.
Great.
I was going to ask you, how many people take advantage of a garden spot there?
The plots themselves, where you kind of grow whatever you want on your different people? We have about 20 people that have their own plots at this point. Some of them have multiple plots.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we have maybe 30, 35 plots in production, if you will, but about 20 of people manage those. And that's theirs to take care of. They're a great community of people, and kind of eclectic community that just love to grow fresh, good food.
Well, the day we were out there, some of those, they took really good care of them.
Well, we should plan the visit, because you want to plan when things are, you know, like you're ready to pick, and not just, you know.
Dave can get tomatoes.
And one of the other things, sometimes when they can't eat all that they've grown, they change their sign, and they put a sign out that says, take what you can eat.
They also.
You can go in.
Yeah. The donation and the community really, it used to feel a little more separated, but we've really tried to combine the efforts of the community gardeners with the donation and the sharing component, so that we don't have waste.
That's wonderful.
So, yeah. So, and the kiddos from Patterson have some raised boxes out there, so they like to come out, and they're excited. Today was their first day, so they were going to the garden.
Absolutely.
And Paul always asks us, if we're going to eat, we got to shovel.
Yeah, well, he will always make you work before reward, for sure.
Okay, so avoid Paul, we'll make him ask.
Well, thank you. Thanks for that presentation.
Thank you for your consideration, and we would certainly appreciate your support for this good work we'd like to do.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Do you have a quick question? If you could.
Sure.
Is the deadline September 4th for the application submission?
Yes, it is.
When do you plan on submitting your actual application? Is it, you're going to submit before September 4th at some point, or?
Ideally.
Ideally, yeah.
If past experience is any indicator, probably September 3rd.
Yeah, we, yes, we'd like to not be in a fire drill, but probably end of the month.
Okay, and have you received the resolution from Milford yet? Are you waiting on that?
I don't have the paper, but I've spoken with Benjamin and presented it to him. I have a letter of support from Soil and Water, as well as the Solid Waste District.
Okay, okay.
We, I've also reached out to Josh at the Park District.
Okay. Would the board like us to prepare that resolution of support for?
Yes.
Yes.
Please. We can have that ready for next week, if you would like.
Have that prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Board? We will move on with our agenda. We are at Letter D. Letter D is public participation. Is there anyone here today that'd like to participate with the public? You want, well, come on up, come on up to the podium so we can hear you. Tell us your name and your address.
My name is David Wood, I'm not from Claremont County, so I'm maybe not supposed to speak.
You're fine.
No, you're fine, go right to the podium.
We had to cross a line.
You are, you are free. We're not expected to comment on matters that are brought before the Board at this time, and you'll have five minutes, so tell us who you are.
My name is Sandra Wood. And where you're from? I'm from Pleasant Ridge, Cincinnati.
Well, welcome to Claremont County.
Thank you. I love your county. I mean, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, on the housing, since we've gone through a big cuts in Medicaid, do you get a lot, did he leave?
Billy? That's all right, we've.
Do you get a lot of that funding? And he had up there, I think, 9% of his funding came from federal sources?
Uh-huh.
How's he going to make up that funding if he gets cut?
That's going to be tough, you know, everybody's looking to find out what that's really going to look like, but we don't know how that's going to come out just yet, but.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we have, not just the Claremont County Board of Commissioners, but we have a Commissioners Association of Ohio, they're looking at that very closely with their advocacy group. And also, keep in mind that we have two legislators here, who are representatives of the House of reps in the state of Ohio, and we have a congressional, and we have a United States Senator. So all of them are state representatives, they'll all be looking at that. Yep.
That's good, because it's going to take up a lot to make up that difference.
Yep.
9%. And thank you so much. I wanted to thank Mr. Bill, because he does a wonderful job, because it's such an important job.
It is. Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
I'm getting old myself. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in public participation? Hearing none, I'll close public. We will move on to E, which is our consent agenda. Board, you have had the consent agenda prior to the meeting, had an opportunity to review it. Are there any changes or things that need to be set out from the consent agenda?
None.
Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran. Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes, we will move on to the non-consent agenda, which starts on page four, item number eight. It's a recommendation that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 124-25 to approve payment to vendors in the amount of $3,441,194.91, as outlined in the BCC Approval Invoice Report for checks dated August 13, 2025, BCC Directed Pre-Porter Invoice Report, and the Procurement Card Transaction Report is presented by the County Auditor on August 11, 2025, and further authorize the County Auditor to issue warrants pursuant to and in compliance with 3.9.16 of the Ohio Revise Code to have a motion to pay bills.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran? Commissioner Painter?
Yes, we will move on to item number nine.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I S D Director. This is a recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners, I'm sorry, a recommendation to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of Claremont County Commissioners, or in his absence, any other member of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the memorandum of understanding with the University of Cincinnati on behalf of the Ohio Cyber Range Institute for participation in the Ohio Persistent Cyber Improvement Program at no cost to the county. Just wanted to remind you, this was the presentation I did last time, and this does satisfy part of the House Bill 96 Cyber Security Training Initiatives.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 10. Do I have a motion, or item number nine, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Anything further? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes, thank you. Item number 10.
Recommendation to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of County Commissioners, or in his absence, any other member of the Board of County Commissioners, to execute a change order number one, listed as project change request to the professional services statement of work for the implementation use of the Microsoft Teams Voice Calling Phone Service in compliance with the terms and conditions in the Master Service Agreement, MCSA 0130, between the State of Ohio and Cincinnati Bell of Cincinnati, at no additional cost and effective upon execution.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 10. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second. Anything further? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes, item number 11.
It's a recommendation to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of County It's a recommendation to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of County Commissioners, or in his absence, any other member of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the professional services statement of work between the Board of Claremont County Commissioners and Cincinnati Bell of Cincinnati for the implementation and use of the Analog Plus Elevators Emergency Calling Service solution for two-way VoIP calling in the county elevators with cellular backup at rate not to exceed $60,120, effective upon execution for five years in compliance with the terms and conditions and contingent upon the release of the required purchase order. I just wanted to make a comment here during our phone project, going through all the audits of everything, we found that the county elevators were on the existing phone system. Best practice is to have that in its separate, as well as we were also informed in 2022 that FCC deregulated POTS communication. So, that was supposed to kind of encourage businesses to move away from the plano television, telephone system and go to current technologies, networking, cellular, stuff like that. So, this puts us on all of our elevators, its own system, that will utilize our network for phone connectivity with a backup of cellular and it's a battery backup. It's a managed service, so if anything happens, we know exactly who to call, they come out and repair and stuff. And I know in the last couple of months, we've had a couple of issues where the button was pushed and it didn't work correctly, so this will help us out a lot.
Right.
Okay. Fantastic. Board, you've heard the reading of item number 11, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, anything further? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Chris? Can you, would you mind giving the Board just a quick update on our implementation of the phone system if you can and where we stand and, and how we're doing and what the schedule is?
I sent the first email out on Monday, kind of talking about it. We are, we are two weeks out, a little less now since it's Wednesday, but we are looking at, let me back up, the way our phone system was set up with Cincinnati Bell, or I think it's Ultra Fiber now, we were going to do campus by campus and do a slow migration to the new system. We can't do that. The way it's set up in their system, when we go to port a phone number to the new system, it's everything in that group, which is the entire county. So, we have to kind of rip the Band-Aid and do it all at once. So, we will be working the weekend of August 22nd, Saturday 23rd, Sunday the 24th, all hands on deck. We will start Friday about 4:30, they'll start that porting process. That takes anywhere from a half hour to 45 minutes to complete. Once that's completed, we'll be on the new phone system. So, we'll be at the critical areas, the Sheriff's Office, the jail, juvenile, comm center, CTC, they have early Saturday morning services. So, we'll be at those critical locations to make sure everything's up and running and working, it should be. Then we'll spend Saturday and Sunday running around the county, excuse me, to all the offices and setting those phones up so that come Monday morning, when people come in, it'll be live. We'll also be putting on keyboards the login instructions to the phones, because with this system, you have to log in. We don't know your passwords, so you'll have a login first thing Monday morning to get that set up. We're gonna have ISD personnel at each campus so they can quickly get to anybody that has some issues. Cincinnati Bell or CBTS is gonna have a phone bridge open on Monday, so when I get that information, I'll pass that along as well so that if we're just inundated with people not, you know, figuring out how to log in or having some issues, there's also a phone number that's gonna help us out as well to try and help everybody as quickly as possible. We've done a lot of testing so far, everything is going very smooth. If you've called ISD in the last six weeks, we've been using the Microsoft Teams Voice System right now as a test, so everything seems to be going good. We're, equipment's trickling in, we're almost done with that. I think Thursday's the last delivery. We'll start to deploy that equipment out next week, so you'll start to see boxes arriving, kind of sit on your desk and wait for the weekend. So, right now, you know, feel very confident and comfortable with the way everything's going. So, I'll have another email out, probably the end of this week, and we'll send another one out next week, just kind of reminding everybody what's happening. And as we get those details, I'll start passing that out as well, so.
And Chris, I wanted to ask you, you're gonna start with like the sheriff and are you doing the courts also, because there'll be Saturday courts at that time?
Yeah, Ryan Road.
And my other concern is job of the family services, because a lot of times they're gonna have workers in-house on Saturday and, you know, I always think of, you know, the little kids being there and, you know, somebody trying to come and take a child or something. Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna work with.
Those crucial areas, okay.
And then I'm gonna have conversations with like Dottie and everybody, just, just make sure we're not missing anything and try and.
Thank you.
As quickly as possible.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number 12. Hey, Mr. Nyer, how are you?
Hi.
Doing well, thank you. Good to see you this morning.
I'm hearing Chris Rollins' absence, he's at a conference today, so I'll be presenting. My name is Tim Nyer, I am the Assistant Director of Claremont County Water Resources over the water treatment. Recommendation to award and, award the bid and execute the contract for project number 6401-60256 for the BMW Treatment Plant Pump Rehabilitation Project located in Batavia Township pursuant to the plans and specifications to Buckeye Pumps, a division of Ohio Transmission LLC, 1311 Freeze Works Place, Gallion, Ohio, 44833 for the lowest and best bid received on June 26, 2025. And the item prices is outlined in the bid for a total amount not to exceed $126,550.00 in compliance with the terms and conditions of the contract and contingent upon the release of the required purchase order.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 12, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Then moved in second, any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes. Item number 13.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
This is Matt Sander in the Construction Engineering Division of the Water Resources Department. And as Tim said, Chris is out of town, so I'm presenting this for Chris. Item 13 is a recommendation to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of the County Commissioners, or in his absence, any other member of the Board of County Commissioners to execute change order number one to the contract with Rack and Blower Excavating Company of Hamilton, Ohio, previously ratified by the Board of County Commissioners on May 8, 2024 for the Branch Hill Miamiville Road Water Main Replacement Project, Front Street to Booster Pump 1, project number 6401-60218 located in Miami Township, which represents a decrease in the amount of $218,873.10 for the total adjusted contract price to date of $2,862,786.90, as well as a non-compensable extension of 19 calendar days for revised contract completion date of April 24, 2025.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 13, do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes. Thank you. Item number 14.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Item 14 is a recommendation to adopt Resolution 125-25 resolving to adopt the five-year consolidated plan for Claremont County, Ohio relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDPG Program and Home Investment Partnerships Home Program for fiscal years 2025 through 2029, and to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of County Commissioners, or in his absence, any other member of the Board to execute the application forms and certifications in compliance with understandings and assurances required for federal assistance with U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 14, do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Desmond, before you leave, we got to hear about the conservancy. Now we know what's, what's going on and what's happening up there, so the property is already in conservancy, so.
Oh, excellent.
You got it.
Thank you so much.
So, Milford's supposed to be putting a resolution together to support that project, so we'll wait that. Thank you. Item number 15.
Morning Board.
Morning. How you doing?
50 acres, office management budget. I have a recommendation to resolve to approve and authorize changes in the annual appropriation resolution number 151-24 for county year 2025. So, we have four supplementals. The first one is juvenile family dependency treatment, other expenses for $7,500. This was due to an increased number of participants in the family recovery court. The next is engineer roads, other expenses for $761,150, and this is the state Route 132 widening project, and then this will be covered with, paid for with the. Yeah, will be done. We have juvenile title 1D regular salaries for $16,945, and allocation to the, was higher than what it was anticipated, so they're putting the budget in place to spend it, as well as the fringes for $5,000.
Thanks, Emily. Board, you've heard the reading of item number 15, do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes, thank you. We are at letter G, additions to the agenda. Tom, any additions to the agenda?
We do have, I believe our clerk has an addition to the agenda.
Okay. The addition is for Claremont County Department of Job and Family Services for a sub grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Children and Youth Services. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes, it has been added to the agenda. Dottie, morning.
Thank you Commissioners, good morning. Dottie Meyer for the Department of Job and Family Services. The add-on is for a recommendation to authorize the execution of a sub grant agreement. It's number G2627-0156. This is between the Claremont County Department of Job and Family Services, which serves as the administrative entity for the Southwest Ohio Regional Training Center, that's located in Claremont County, Ohio, and the Department of Children and Youth, DCY, that's in Columbus, by Dorothy Meyer, Director, Claremont County Department of Job and Family Services, the administrative entity for the Southwest Ohio Regional Training Center for the provision of funding for required statewide training for county child protective service workers, supervisors, assessors, foster, adoptive, kinship caregivers, and 4E courts in the Southwest Ohio Regional Training Center in the amount of up to $563,000 for state fiscal year 2026 and up to $563,000 for state fiscal year 2027 for the total amount not to exceed $1.126 million, effective for the period of 7/1 of '25 through 6/30 of '27 pursuant to the terms and conditions outlined in agreement. Obviously, we could not come with this resolution and request for sub grant until the funding was approved through the statute.
Board, you've heard the recommendation to authorize the execution of this sub grant, do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Tom, any other additions?
Uh, nothing additional.
Okay, we will move to letter H. Letter H, I'm requesting executive session pursuant to section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment compensation or dismissal of a public employee or more public employees. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Painter?
Yes. And Betty, since you won our contest, why don't you come up here and sit in this chair and David will take a picture of you? What do you think of that?
What about your brother?
All right, so I've got, I'm gonna watch the, uh, watch the live stream. I might just stop. I don't think they're gonna have any other significant business, but they always put county and staff elected official discussion after executive session, which is ridiculous. Basically, it's a way for them just to pontificate when nobody's in the room usually because everybody leaves when they go into executive session because you have no idea when they're going to come back. So what I'm gonna do here, let's see if I can do this right here. I've got a couple of videos queued up. So people have asked me about the, um, let me do this here. People have asked me about the, uh, the sign behind me. And I had on, on, uh, one of the things, uh, that I did, um, a, let me find what I'm doing here. I had played some clips. So the sign behind me is from a place called LC Signs in China. And a lot of people are aware of LC Signs and I encourage you to look for LC Signs on the internet if you need any kind of signed things because there's this guy named Tony from LC Signs. And he makes, uh, you know, he makes the signs, they make the signs, but he does all these impressions and he makes fun of woke culture. So I put this out once before, but here's a little quick video of the beginnings of some of Tony's hysterical ads for these signs.
I am my boyfriend's first black girlfriend.
If you're black, then I'm the real Donald Trump himself. China, China, I know China very well. I know everybody in China.
I'm proud to be black.
And I'm proud to be Donald Trump.
You know, I've been to China, tremendous place really. And let me tell you folks, there is a way to spot a bad LED sign. It's so simple. Even Sleepy Joe could do it.
We're not the same person.
We're here to set the record straight. We're queer.
What is it about us that people find so similar?
The cocks. Anyways, how to know if a sign company is capable is to check their machinery.
And I'm feeling good.
Yeah, still looking like a man. Anyways, how to know if a sign company is capable is to check their machinery.
What's up California? My name is Alex.
What's up, I'm Aiden.
I'm Oliver.
I'm Brian.
And I'm Dylan.
And together we are gay as fuck. You guys are gay as fuck. Anyways, we've been making signage for more than 14 years.
Gay without an iPhone is not a gay.
Not a real gay without an iPhone.
Anyways, watch me put it out like this. The design is very human.
Okay, so that's Tony. So I queued that one up just as something funny that I thought was funny, at least as Tony. So if you need a sign like that or you need any kind of LED type signs, uh, go look for, uh, Tony at LC Signs. Now, the next thing I'm gonna play is last night at the Union Township Trustee Meeting, Linda Fraley was there and there's, I think, an ongoing scandal. That, let me get myself back up here. I think there's an ongoing scandal that Linda Fraley is trying to get this guy Greg Gentile to be the next auditor. Greg has no experience or qualifications that would seem to be relevant. He's also only been in their office a little over a year. And he's a complete D nozzle whenever you try to talk with him, at least whenever I try to talk with him. And by the way, if you can't talk to people who are going to ask you tough questions or be critical if you have bad answers, then you don't belong in any of these positions, right? That's the, that's the whole point is these are supposed to be adult people that can handle tough questions. But Greg Gentile seems like just a clown. I mean, literally a clown. I mean, like he's on, he thinks he's smug, arrogant, whatever. But anyway, Linda and, uh, Linda Fraley and Jason were at the Union Township Trustee Meeting last night, uh, related to some zoning thing. I didn't, I came in late. I didn't even realize it. But then I tried to ask Linda again for like the third time, what is this guy Greg Gentile's job? Because she created some made up bullshit job for Greg Gentile. And, uh, nobody knows what he does and he doesn't actually, Union Township is by far the biggest township in the county. And he's never come to a meeting to present. He's supposed to be in some sort of outreach job. So what I want to do here is I'm gonna jump to, um, uh, jump to play. It's about three minutes and I'm keeping track of if they come back from executive session. About three minutes from last night for...
So I showed up here at the Union Township Trustee Meeting.
From last night for Linda, me trying to talk to Linda and her son Jason, uh, Jason, I mean, you can't make this shit up. Jason dumped his family for an escort, uh, that he was enabling. And, and so I, you can't make it up. You cannot make the stuff up. So these people don't want any exposure, uh, because you know, you know what, what they say is if you're proud of what you do, you want people to know about it. If you're not, you want to hide it, right? And so if Linda Fraley is proud of her move related to Greg Gentile, then why is she so constantly running away? So let's take a listen to this video that I just posted last night.
So I showed up here at the Union Township Trustee Meeting and low and behold, Linda Fraley and Jason Fraley are here. So it gave me another opportunity to keep asking Linda the same question. What is Greg Gentile's job?
How you doing there, slick?
Hey, Jason, how you doing? Sharpshooter. Hey, Linda, can you give me a comment now on what Greg Gentile's job is?
Having a conversation, Chris. Leave me alone.
You're a public official. You're in a public lobby at a public meeting. I'm sorry.
You don't have permission.
I don't need your permission.
I don't know who that guy is, but he ought to get informed on a thing we call democracy or republic and elected officials. He seems like some clown. There's other parts where he's in Anderson Township. He's got some business interests. Uh, and, and, uh, apparently he is not for freedom, liberty and, and, uh, the press. You know, he's against all those things because he's trying to get some snow cone stand or whatever the hell he's doing, whatever the hell he was trying to do. Which I'm sure the Fraleys were wanting something out of it for them. But here we go.
Okay, I don't need your permission to record. She's the auditor in this county and I'm trying to get information.
I'm gonna walk forward so I'll get my way, please.
But you're assaulting me?
Come on, mom.
Jason Fraley regularly uses intimidation, pushing you out of the way, stuff like this. And he would be protected. If I did the same things, I'd get arrested in Claremont County, but not Jason Fraley. He's got the veil of his, of his mom. And by the way, I think that's why she needs to get a crony nothing burger like Greg Gentile into that office to make sure that the shit don't hit the fan afterwards on valuation issues and other things that have been perpetuated by the Fraley dynasty. But one of the reasons for term limits is you don't want people in office for like 30 years. Because then when you have transition, it's very hard because, you know, because one person has done everything forever. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, that's why I think, you know, Fraley, it's a long overdue to leave, but it makes it hard for a transition.
Linda, do you think this is your best strategy? To never answer for what Greg Gentile's job is? Have your son knock me out of the way? Jason, how's your ex-wife doing? How's Troy Bushman doing, Linda? How's Troy doing? Linda, could you?
All right, I want to comment. You know, we're supposed to live in a world of an adversarial press. It should be collegial to people, but if you are going, and this goes for every elected official in Claremont County. If you're gonna avoid simple questions like what is Greg Gentile's job and run away, then it's a adversarial pressure to dig deeper on you. And, and they should expose more because you're acting in a corrupt way. And that's why, you know, they used to say, don't start fights with people that buy ink by the barrel, okay? So if they're going to go down these paths, Linda, where you will not answer a simple question as to what Greg Gentile's job and Greg Gentile acts like a smug douche nozzle wherever he goes, then expect there's gonna be more inspection. And I'm starting to piece it together why you need Greg Gentile in there. Because you need somebody to protect you from things coming out after the fact. Now, you can prove me wrong, Linda. Twice, twice Linda Fraley offered to do an interview with me, once at her window and once at the Brown County Lincoln Day Dinner, I was confirming, you know? And that, then she says she won't, okay? All right, Linda, well then I'll keep digging. You want to defend yourself? Please, I keep asking you. Give me the answer to what Greg Gentile's job is. Let me keep going. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Please just give me a comment on what Greg Gentile's job is. That's all I keep asking you and you keep running away. So what is Greg Gentile's job? What is Greg Gentile's job? What qualifications does he have? He won't answer. Are you threatening me to hit me with a cane? Linda, could you please just give me a comment on what Greg Gentile's job is? All right, I'm gonna keep trying to get her to comment on what Greg Gentile's made up job is. Even other elected officials are saying it's a made up job. You know what's so funny though? They have some case going on here. Their name was not on the agenda. I guess they're neighbors of somebody doing something and they're probably trying to shake them down in some way. But Greg Gentile was not here. Mr. Outreach didn't come to the Union Township Trustee Meeting. He, as far as I understand, I asked one of the trustees, he's never been to one of these meetings. So Mr. Outreach only goes to things where Linda introduces him around in non-hostile environments where he doesn't have to answer any questions. But he doesn't come here. It's funny, Linda totes the guy around during the workday. Well, so what is your plan? What are you gonna change? It's none of my business. I love it. It is none of our business what Greg Gentile's plan is. Should I go ask Linda Fraley what his, what your plan's gonna be? So what is Greg Gentile's job? What is Greg Gentile's job? What qualifications does he have? He won't answer. Are you threatening me to hit me with a cane? Being paid for by the taxpayers to be introduced around to political people. But he doesn't come in the evenings, Greg Gentile doesn't, to events where the auditor is coming to whether she's doing so in her official or unofficial capacity. So that's the Fraley family.
All right, so that's one of the things I had queued up. I have one other thing I think I queued up, uh, to watch here. And then I'm probably gonna just end the stream at that point. You can watch when they come back from, uh, executive session. They like to pontificate when nobody's in the room. Uh, it was a very boring meeting today. There was nothing, uh, you know, most excitement was somebody came from where? From, uh, from, uh, someplace not Pleasant Ridge to talk about nothing. So, but the other thing I have queued up here is, uh, a lot of stuff is blowing up, is blowing up in Adams County. I think Adams County is a news desert, even though technically they have two papers. Just so you know, you can go watch, there's a video that's blown up that's got like as many views as there are residents in Adams County. Because I think the people, I think it's super corrupt in Adams County. And why am I paying attention? Well, uh, our corrupt prosecutor, Mark DeColby, whose dad was corrupt, he's corrupt, his whole, not his whole staff, but his civil division chief, uh, Brian Shrive was brought in with no prosecutorial office experience at all. Passing over people with significant experience like Jeanette Nichols, people like, um, uh, Mary Lynn Burke, the judge who was in the civil division forever, gotta be just shaking their heads at the corrupt nature and the incompetent nature of the civil division under Brian Shrive. Well, any event, so the prosecutor, uh, uh, our prosecutor, DeColby, brought in a special prosecutor to, to, uh, basically whitewash and bury a case relating to, oh, oh, an assault that took place in the Claremont County GOP meeting. So you can go watch, but I got a video on that. I got several videos on that on the Watchdog Wire page. And, you know, the, it was, the prosecutorial idiocy of the whole thing. They never called the key witness to the stand to guarantee acquittal of somebody that was being protected. And it was done by a guy named Aaron Haslam, who is the fake prosecutor in Adams County because he doesn't actually live there. So I dug into a little bit and it's like unbelievable. I, I get like, I'm now getting overloaded with emails and requests to call from people in Adams County because you got a racist commissioner, you got another person that doesn't actually live there. I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable. And one of the people there is Steve Caraway. And I, so I queued this video up because it is the most direct relationship to our area. So Steve Caraway is a politico in southwest Ohio. He was the householder kingpin for southern, southwest Ohio, uh, with Gene Schmidt and Alan Freeman. And he never turned on, uh, turned on Householder. He never testified. And he ended up getting promoted to be the, uh, like a lead person in the, in the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. But when I was out in Adams County, I stopped by Steve Caraway's house and was gonna try to get comment from him on, on, uh, the events involving his involvement with Larry Householder and his lack of ever turning on Larry Householder. By the way, everybody that, the second tier of people, other than the people that the feds took, ask yourself, who is, who in Ohio? At this whole Larry Householder, biggest bribe scream in Ohio history, maybe national history. Who beyond the people the feds got ever got got? How many people got got by our attorney general or by a county? They don't because what happened in the Larry Householder thing is normal in Ohio politics, normal. It's normal corrupt like that. I know on the Republican side, it's probably on both sides. What Larry Householder did is he did it with such bravado and so much money that it attracted the attention, attacked. It caught the attention of the feds, all right? So let's play this, this video. Let me throw up here this video of, of, uh, me at Caraway's house on, it was Monday.
That house behind me is the supposed home of Steve Caraway, uh, southwest Ohio political, uh, sketchy kingpin. Steve was the head of the Larry Householder operation for southwest Ohio and involved heavily in Gene Schmidt and Alan Freeman's campaigns. He never will answer for this. He did not testify. He kept his mouth shut and then he got promoted basically to, to a higher position. I'm gonna go over there and knock on the door and see if I can get Steve Caraway to take any questions about his role in the Larry Householder operation. Doorbell doesn't seem to work. Caraway is now the head of the, I don't know the head, but he works at the, um, Commissioners, County Commissioners Association of Ohio, which is an NGO that gets taxpayer money and then lobbies for things against the taxpayers to help commissioners. He's either not here or he's hiding. All right, so that's, uh, my attempt to ask Steve Caraway some questions. Oh, he's got a camera here. So he sees me, so I'll wave to him. He knows I'm here. So, all right, but that's Steve Caraway. He also, if I didn't mention it, has a paper called The Informer. Which is, uh, so it can control the media and control the politics.
Okay, so that is a video of, uh, of, um, relating to Steve Caraway. So in the background, my computer's like a little funky because in the background, it's like, oh shit, I want to stick a little bit longer here. If I can get, I'm trying to upload another video, but I feel like I've overloaded my computer. So if this, if this drops all of a sudden, you'll know it's because my computer got tired and couldn't handle how much I was trying to have it do at one time. So this whole Adams County thing, by the way, the issue is that their prosecutor, Aaron Haslam, does not actually live in Adams County. So he's married to the daughter of one of the richest men in Cincinnati, John Barrett of Western Southern. And they have a $1.7 million house in Indian Hill. He supposedly claims to live in an efficiency studio apartment. And what I've, what I've come to realize is that, uh, it's, it's not alone. There's a commissioner named Barbara Morshey also is, doesn't really live in, in Brown, in Adams County. And so it's, it's just unbelievable. And they're trying to cover it up. They pulled in, uh, Brian Shrive in the Claremont County office to do him a solid to cover it up. But they, it's so stupid by doing it, they've now exposed Christine Barrett Haslam in Hamilton County's voter registration. Because it's just in case you don't know, like, how voter registration stuff would work. If I was like, I live in, in, uh, Union Township. Let's say that I was gone for years being a consultant. I went to China or something. I was living there. But I still had my house. Well, I still have my address. I can still vote because I have an intent to return, okay? I have an intent to return, okay? And so a lot of people confuse things like intent to return. So intent to return, if you were a congressman and you got a house in Washington DC and, and you were living there most of the time, but you have an intent to return to your district and you have a house in your district. Now, the situation involving Aaron Haslam is not that, is not that. The situation involves when you're married, where is your residence? Where is your legal voting residence? And it's wherever your family is. So your wife and kids, if you're a man, you know, but basically where your family is established residence. Well, Aaron Haslam's wife, uh, lives in Indian Hills, registered to vote in Hamilton County. His kids, I believe, go to, I know they go to school in Hamilton County. They, I believe they go to private school, you know, rich people. And he though is registered in Adams County. Well, you can't do that. You cannot be married and be registered in two different locations in Ohio, okay? That's directly against the statute. I think it's 30502D or something like that. I probably said it wrong. But that's directly against the statute because you, a married couple are, unless you are legally separated, which means there has to be some court action involved or divorce or getting divorced, you have to be in the same household. And so Aaron Haslam is in, Aaron Haslam's a fuck up. So Aaron Haslam was on like the state medical board or something and F'd it up. He was Frost Brown Todd attorney and F'd that up. And now he's basically in Adams County, I guess, you know, his wife or, he, he has a rich family, so he could just do nothing, I guess. But I guess his wife or somebody wants him to be legitimate or get him out of the house during the week. And so that's the situation with, uh, with, uh, Aaron Haslam. So the, so there, you can go look on my Facebook page and there's lots of information about this that you can... And I'm just unbelievable how much the people in Adams County are responding to this because I feel like they don't have any voice there. One of the papers, suppose the papers, The Informer, is run by Steve Caraway. The other one, the, the Public Defender or People's Defender is a, the same operation as the Claremont Sun. I think it's better than the Claremont Sun, I think, probably, but you can't be worse than the Claremont Sun. But, but they don't really have somebody that will take up these mantles. And it's a very inbred, uh, community politically. And I'm finding out all kinds of stuff. So I can think of ultimate question for these people in Adams County. Because my interest is Aaron Haslam coming into my county and throwing out cases. How much is Aaron Haslam worth? So Barbara Moore, you want your voting situation to be exposed as fraudulent? You know, Kelly, um, Jones, you want, how about your helicopter deal? I just got a flood of things coming in. And one of the things coming in is that this Aaron Haslam is absolutely incompetent as a lawyer. And there's a lot of people who have been the victim of his incompetence, either as a defense attorney or in a prosecutorial situation. So it's, 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 uh, you know, that he was brought in as a special prosecutor. Just so you know, whenever they bring in special prosecutors to get somebody independent, if it's Claremont County, there's 100% chance it's forum shop for a predetermined outcome. And there's people like, um, Mike Moser from Butler County that was brought in for something like that. There was Rayver Clark, Jay Rayver Clark, and I'm gonna get into all these people. I am going to get into all these people. I only have two hands. I can only do so much at one time. And Aaron Haslam, I just ran into this about, he's not even legitimately in, in Adams County. And, but Rayver Clark and, and, uh, Moser, you know, you're next. I mean, there's other people next too. This is a complete travesty of justice, this bringing these people in. And, and by the way, it's also a complete travesty of justice that our sheriff's office in Claremont County has bent over to Mark DeColby that they know is corrupt. And people get away with stuff because nobody will stand up for what's right. And, and DeColby's very politically motivated, okay? So all that said, I'm gonna shift gears. I uploaded another video. I'm gonna try to play. And the video is about, this one is about licking people's balls. Everybody get ready. There's a video about licking people's balls I'm gonna play now. So down in New Richmond after the flood, uh, there were some absolutely illegal power turn-ons. I think Painter was involved and it's wrong what happened, okay? Now, if you want your power turned on, I get that you want your power turned on like right now. But it's dangerous to not have the proper test done after electrical stuff and gas stuff has been exposed to water. Well, they turned on some power in some houses. I don't know why those particular houses, probably some connection. But I went down in their parade, when there was some parade, I just happened to be there, by the way. And I tried to ask, by the way, parades are an excellent time to ask people questions. They're moving slow. They're typically handing out candy, talking and waving to people. So the nonsense, oh, it's so dangerous to ask a question during a parade is absolutely asinine. It's a perfect time to ask questions because now you got somebody walking along a route where they can't run away the same. And, uh, so I'm all for it. But I tried to ask Scott, I was told that Scott Wolf was involved in these illegal power activations. I tried to ask him about him and he started, he told me to, he wanted me to lick his balls. I told him I wasn't into that kind of thing, uh, but more power to him if he could find somebody. And I, by the way, I also think it was inappropriate if you're into licking other guys' balls to not doing it during a parade. You know, the kids are watching everything. So Scott, get the guys to lick your balls some other time. But he calls, I think, called me a stupid bastard and told me to go fuck myself. And I'm just quoting him because Scott Wolf is like an assistant fire chief public official. So I'm sure I can quote him because he would be a, a excellent role model. So when, they had the Liberty Landing ribbon cutting with the line down there this week on Monday. And so what I did was I went and, uh, I was there and talked to, uh, one of the councilmen. And, uh, and, and he, he says that supposedly I pounded on the fire truck, okay? Which never happened, never happened. In this county, anything you hear about somebody, either way, I think, second guess it. I always have tons of receipts and that's why it scares people. Because I have videos, I have this. And that's why most of the time, you know, I, I, when I'm recording something or doing something, is to protect myself. So if somebody comes out later with a false narrative, I can back up what I have said or what I am saying. There's a reason why I've never been, you know, challenged, sued otherwise. Because I work very hard to make sure, I could, I guess I could make mistakes like anybody, but I work very hard to have the receipts and to have the facts. So what I'm gonna do here, assuming this video is now uploaded, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to look for the video here. And it says it's uploaded, okay, but I'm here and I don't see it. When I go in, I don't see it. So let's go here. On one screen I see it uploaded and on the other screen, I don't. If I lose everybody or whoever's here, um, you know, I'm gonna hit refresh here because I think maybe my browser, let's see, I might kill this whole thing, but I'm gonna hit refresh. Okay, so I'm refreshing it back. It says I'm back. Let's, let's see if I do this now, if I see the video. It's weird. It's like it doesn't show me the video that I can see on the other screen as well. There we go. So this is the lick my balls video and, uh, and me refuting that this councilman's saying that I pounded the truck, okay? So your son is the fire chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I hear people saying that he's groomed, he's gonna be on council soon or get on council soon.
No, I don't think so.
Now, what do you think? You know, I tried to ask Scott Wolf about some illegal turn-ons of power down here after the flood. And Scott Wolf's quote to me was that I should lick his balls. And your son talked to me and then I asked him to do an interview and he wouldn't do it. But hopefully you think it's reprehensible that a, that Scott Wolf or anybody would tell somebody a...
But hopefully, you think it's reprehensible that a, that Scott Wolf or anybody would tell somebody, a reporter asking him a question, to lick his balls. It's on video, you can go watch it.
I don't think it was appropriate. I seen it. I seen it. I don't think it was appropriate.
By the way, people can bitch and moan about me, but I was not, you know, I talk to people in parades. It's a good time to talk to politicians. They tend to be handing out candy, but that was in the staging area. That was before the parade went off.
The only thing that I would say
Yeah.
Is if, and, and you can quote me on this, the only thing I would say.
I'm recording you, so I'm gonna quote you on all of it.
The only thing I would say is, I understand you walked up and was hitting the fire truck.
Not at all, totally wrong. I put out the whole video. So that's what floors me in this place. People are just liars. And I put out the video. So even with video evidence of what happened, then people make up some false narrative. I never, I don't believe I ever even touched the fire truck.
Well, that was what I heard.
I had this microphone, and I was like this.
That's what I, that's what I heard, and that's what I was.
Well, somebody should ask me, and this county is full of people that lie and make up shit. I don't know, I know they do it about me, but they probably do it about a lot of people, so.
And about me too.
This is the full and unredacted video from the May 22nd, 2025 Scott Wolf, New Richmond Fire Department Lick My Balls episode. You will see that there is absolutely no me pounding on any trucks or any other lies that might have been told by Scott Wolf or others.
It's Scott Wolf here. Hey Scott, I got questions for you. I'm Chris Hicks with the Watchdog Wire. I have questions for you about a couple, I don't, you can keep moving if you want. About two, you can keep those, those are just notes of mine. But on two properties that look like they got their gas turned on without going through the proper county process, that show that both their gas and electric should not be on. Were you involved with that? You'll look into it? So you're not sure if you were? You said what? Alright, say that again, I couldn't hear you.
Did you notice we're in the parade?
What? Did you notice I'm asking you a question?
Hey Hicks. Go fuck yourself.
Okay.
In all the excitement, I forgot that he had told me to go fuck myself in my first encounter with him. I caught back up with him, and this is when the lick my balls part of the conversation took place.
Scott, I'm not gonna let up on wanting answers to questions. You can tell me to go fuck myself, but that's entirely inappropriate, and you don't belong in public service. I don't need to ask permission, and you know that.
If you wanna have a meeting, you stupid bastard, you call a meeting.
Are you mental, are you under any mental evaluation? I've heard stories about you. Lick your balls.
So that is all of the video. There were no other encounters. So all you hear is Scott Wolf telling me to go fuck myself, telling me that I'm a stupid bastard, and him wanting me to lick his balls, which is something he apparently is into. Alright, I just wanna be absolutely clear. If you're, as long as in privacy you're going home, you like to find a guy and lick his balls, that's okay. You know, it's not my thing to get involved. Now, in public, no. This is wrong, but you know, Scott Wolf is apparently bisexual and wants people to lick his balls, or either homosexual or bisexual, and wants people to lick his balls. And he's a representative. I know they had some drag shows down there in New Richmond. I don't know if he's, was part of that at all. He's never apologized to me, okay? He's never answered the questions. As I said, somebody said, I went to Feldcamp, the fire chief, to bitch about Scott Wolf, having said lick my balls. That's bullshit. I went to the fire chief to talk about what is the the situation of the power being turned on without the proper authorizations, okay? So, you know, and he talked, he was nice to me, he was on his best behavior, and then he refused to do an interview afterwards. But if necessary for anybody to, about my conversations with him, I'm glad to bring receipts of what was actually said, okay? But Scott Wolf, this whole like, you know, here's the problem with New Richmond, is unless and until they get more housing, more housing. If you go watch my video on this Liberty Landing thing, housing of people with disposable income, like a couple blocks of condo buildings that are elevated, like along Eastern Avenue, where you park your garage on ground level, and it's elevated, so you're out of the flood range. They need that with people with disposable income. They're never gonna turn that place around down there for real without there being more housing in walkable distance. Let me help. I'm gonna try to get Ken Geist to help me with something on this. Is, you know, what you need in these kind of places is you can get some percentage of the people are gonna come from somewhere else, okay? But you've gotta have like 40, 50% of the audience for your bars, restaurants, and so forth, be people that are proximate to them. Unless you're dealing, you know, if you're McDonald's on the highway or something. But if you're gonna be in some sort of community like New Richmond, you're not on a highway, it's not an exit ramp thing, it's not a big, you know, mall, or, you know, you've gotta have more people there with disposable income that can be patrons of these places. And what's such a shed thing there is they go through all this nonsense in New Richmond, all this complete nonsense. We're gonna get a riverboat to show both that this boat, the landing this. None of that is going to turn it around until there is more places for people to live that would attract young people, or affluent people, or affluent retired people that would get condos. What's so funny is, if they would have a couple block, like, my wife's and my condo in Florida is elevated. The first, the bottom level's ground level, and it's where you park your car, and then there's three floors of condos above. If they had something like that, I think you can see that kind of thing on Eastern Avenue probably, but we're probably richer than Richie, more Richie Rich. But if they had that there, and they had 100, 200 units, they would start to really change that community. But why won't they do that? Why do they do all this other stuff, but they don't do the most simple thing? And by the way, if you get enough people with disposable income there, you will automatically draw restaurants and bars and stuff like that, right? The, that kind of business follows that, okay? It doesn't, you know, nobody's like, oh, I wanna build my house close to some bar, okay? You know, they, the, the, the houses get built, and then the places start to come, and they start to flourish, okay? So, I mean, you see that in places like Loveland, Milford. The more they get housing in these areas, the more those places start to flourish. But if New Richmond, you know, doesn't have that, then they're just circling the drain on, you know, people might, if something new and exciting comes, you might go down there once or twice. But if you don't live around there, it's not gonna be worth your trip. There's very few places, especially when you get a little older, that you're gonna really go, like every weekend we go there, or every weekend, you know, you're gonna go try it out a couple times, and then you're not gonna go anymore. And so New Richmond, you know, is, but here's where I'm gonna come back, my point is, when you have absolute ass clowns like Scott Wolf, and you have a system that is, just appears to be totally F'd, and you got these dumbass proposals to waste money like the roundabouts, and you've got public servants like David Painter who fight tooth and nail there being an advisory vote on whether the people even want these roundabouts. You know, you're so backwards and F'd up, you're not gonna, you know, you might get these fool's gold things where you think something good's happening, but wait a while and it'll all go back to shit again. Remember, this is a place that couldn't support affirments, okay? So, that was on 52. So, the, I just, it's just so sad, because that area could be a gem. And there's areas to the west and east that you could easily build blocks of elevated condos, but nobody has the vision. And the political class, the hillbilly political class in New Richmond, I don't think, I think they would shudder at the thought of 200, let's say 200 units that came in there. So let's say 400, 500 people live in there, that were new people to the area, that were F', more affluent than the general population. By the way, more affluent, I get that gentrification can hurt places, but more affluent, bringing in more affluent people with a sensitivity to they're not displacing, I'm not talking about let's keep lower income people out of their houses. To the east and west, there's places where you could build a block or two of condos, of elevated condos down there. But if that happened, it would create more opportunity for the lower income people there, you know? I got involved with something in Newtown, and Newtown's like that too. You've got the people up on the hill that are rich, and then people down in the village that are poor, and, you know, and, and that was very bifurcated and not well thought, but. But anyway, in New Richmond, it's just so sad. You got lick my balls Scott, and a lot of these people are mediocre. They they probably can't get jobs at more impressive fire departments and so forth. And I don't mean to demean or put down people in these roles, but, you know, when your leadership is yelling lick my balls and go fuck yourself out of a fire truck in a parade, you know, and then I'm the one that's supposedly the dangerous one. It's funny, you get these people, oh, Chris Hicks was so unsafe to do that. But it's not unsafe to have your assistant fire chief screaming go fuck yourself out of a fire truck during a parade, which, if you believe, that was kind of in the staging area, by the way. The first part and the other part was like at the beginning. So there weren't really people, you noticed, for the parade yet. And so you have this guy yelling this shit out of the truck. Nobody brings up like, hey, was he yelling that where kids could hear it? Go fuck yourself, you stupid bastard, lick my balls. But, think about that. Somebody should write a Scott Wolf song. Go fuck yourself, stupid bastard, lick my balls. And, you know, like I said, I don't have any problem if Scott likes to get his balls licked, and, you know, and, and I would say that I was flattered and curious on his offer for me to lick his balls, but I'm not into that thing, it ain't gonna happen. So I think I'm gonna end it here. You know, they're still in their, they are still in their executive session right now. You can go over, you know, I'll bring it up here so you can see. I have been monitoring it here, and so you can go over to their page. They do, they stream on YouTube, so the commissioners will, and they'll come back and say something, and I, who knows what they say, I'll check it out later, but, you know, if it was, if somebody had been at public participation and said a lot of controversial stuff, then they would have, they wait until after executive session to respond, because they wanna do it when nobody's in the room. And that's about it. Thank you, guys, anybody that tuned in for this. I don't know how much I'll keep doing this. It's kind of hard to do it on a Wednesday at this time. But I wanted to do it a couple times, just to see kind of how many people watch here. And what, one of the reasons I wanna do it is because there's no benefit to watching it on their feed, because they don't allow, for example, virtual public participation. I think they should allow virtual public participation. But they don't really wanna hear from you. They wanna hear from the people they invited, and, and, you know, and, I don't know, somebody that came from, what, Pleasant Ridge or?